Right now. Hey, I called the meeting to order at five thirty. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Thomas. Doctor Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dr. Moore, and then trustee Ronald.
President.
Doctor Curry.
Yes.
And President Calhoun has his new absence today.
Moving on to item two, approval of the closed session agenda. Is there a motion? It's been moved by trustee Dr. Dr. Moore, it's been moved by trustee Lopez, adjourned discussion. Uh with no discussion, can we have a vote? Oh.
Okay. Trustee Ronald.
Hi.
Trustee Lopez, are you doing a verbal?
I could do a verbal.
Bye. Trustee Dr. Moore?
Yes, I.
That thing in there was yes, though.
The motion carries. Moving on to item three, request to address the bar trustee on closed session agenda matter. Do we have any request?
We do. Um Harold Compton. Regarding closed closed session.
And for for this, um for um. It's, there are a lot of three minutes also, right?
Well, my name is Harold Compton, and uh it was doing here quite a long time, and I had a blessing to be coming in this building. And then there were some matters that were. Brought against me. And um. I couldn't do anything about it, and it went brought to me in a back of a order. I was just cited. And then I went, I went into my um. My first person in charge and had to sign. Sign a statement in which I guess that showing that I admitted guilt to whatever the case may be. I didn't really read through it. And then I was told, I was saying on the severity of this, if he didn't explain anything to me. And he said, don't worry about it. They're just going in your file and they'll be thrown away. And it took a little tension off, but I still didn't understand the situation. That's the first time I worked here this time. A lot of things are different. Another paper, so. Um and then a few other incidents occurred. I did two of the incidents that they documented. One of them was. My brother's time when he died a couple of days, last week rather, and he had COVID. And he stayed in the hospital and I said, care, he probably made medical get checked out if he got COVID too. So I came here to our facility over here. Uh and I got checked. My first I came to work. And then I told him, I thought I might have COVID and uh. I need to get checked out. And then they said what the procedure is, you know, put a mask on and continue working. And um. I said, okay, but I wasn't, I mean, I was at this this establishment when the first COVID hit. And there was, we had to close down everything. It was that severe. People were dying. People were really getting sick. And it was my first time being objected to this. And I told her, I said, I'm going home. I'm gonna come here, I'm gonna get tested. And when they tell me that my test is negative, then I'll come back to work. I'm not gonna jeopardize my life or put anybody else's that I'm around in jeopardy also. And then they then they did an interview for. Um AWOL. I was receiving AWOL thing because of that. Soon as they gave me my my script back from Alino, where that medical Alino was, I presented it to them saying, I'm negative and I'm ready. There you go. And then they may be writing another document about that. And uh. And I just want, I'm just looking out for my safety and for the people that was around me, so. You know, I guess the protocol had changed because I guess Corona kind of lost its power. But to me, it was still Corona. You know what I mean? So I'm not the youngest thing in the bunch. And if I get something like that and I'm mathematics, things of that nature, it got a devastating effect on myself. And it was just. Thing of circumstance, so. That was one of the most serious things they brought against me. They're going to get some gasoline on my car. And they gave me an AWOL for that. So other other things. I did not agree with any of them, and I won't speak on it. Because they said, I won't speak on this one, because this is something I've never done in my life. I don't go to a person, especially an elder or a doctor or a teacher. And say discriminating things against that person about his nationality. I don't do that. I'm not the darkest thing on the planet. So I would never, and you know, say anything like that to anybody.
Your time is up, like you could just like.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know, all I'm doing with this saying is I came for the truth. Both things were presented on the first time I came. And everything was an exaggerated. Like, this personality is a lie. I couldn't do anything or say anything on my behalf at that time.
Question.
Oh.
That is it, yeah.
Moving on to item three, item zero two, uh you know, not been in college for the first time. There's been no items for five. Are there any requests from the board, trustee Dr. Moore?
Uh no future, and I didn't replace.
Trustee Lopez?
No.
Um Dr. Little?
No, this is.
Then. We were moving on to, we need us to close session at five thirty. Moving the meeting to open session at six oh one. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Thomas, president. Doctor Little. Trustee Lopez, president. Trustee Dr. Moore, president. Trustee Ronald.
President.
Doctor Curry.
President.
And President Calhoun has his new absence.
Moving on to the next item, the pleasurable meeting, um trustee Thomas.
Right hand on your heart.
I'm moving on to item six, report of actions taken in closed session between government and closed sessions, five four eight five seven point one. And we have uh one item to report, a closed session, abortive action, there's separate finding and recognition. Of appearing officers stating charges for dismissal, and seeking an idea of field home probationary utility maintenance workers. The roll call vote was as follows. Four zero with one trustee absent. And that's it for the reports, for the report of closed session. Moving on to item seven, approval of the open session agenda. Write your motion. Is there a section? Is there any discussion? Without any discussion. Can we please, um trustee, can please vote online?
Trustee Hannah was beautiful.
Moving on to item eight, request to address the board of trustees on agenda, non-agenda matters. Are there any requests?
Yes. First up is Deborah Askew.
Okay, um there's no mic. I'll talk. I don't know if anyone heard when I played. Last month regarding, I mean, current enrollment for you. Happens in four thousand eighty-two, El Fumeno enrollment for the active duty year as well, uh twenty twenty-three. Twenty twelve, yeah, twelve thousand seven hundred, a long week. Fourteen thousand eight ninety-three. Not enough addressing the last couple of years to be uh. Competent failure drive under the reach of the. The board of trustees, the new trade, increasing enrollment. Low graduation rate and now low retention rate. For now, I'd like to address an incident that I personally have done on Saturday, June twenty-seventh. Twenty forty-four at seven AM. At the intersection of Codwell and Central. I observed a YPMW. Going in the south lane where it was, at the left lane to make a net, going on to Codwell. The car stopped and observed an individual waddle out of the car. Crossing two northbound lanes going towards the on Central Avenue going on. And took out a spray paint and painted over a stage forward. Later realized that board was a recall petition on Dr. Jerome. Another car was there for walking, so. I see other people are noticing that as well. I just want to talk a little bit about um. The public has every rights for recall. They feel that this board, as if within business. Board of trustees, we all were there, it's not doing a great job. They have the rights. To express recall petitions we would have. Um I'm just gonna say a little statement that was given by Dr. Bill. Uh coming here and listening to the public talking about the story, Billy's name on the uh library. Forty minutes. Of back and forth, how we gonna put it, who's gonna pay, blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. But I see here, I see to continue hard work and preservation. Of current and prior Compton College trustees. This is what Dr. Jerome put. You continue to work for for present of current and prior, I'm sorry, and prior Compton College trustees. Then you go down here.
And next is Jonathan Taylor.
Good afternoon, uh board, my name is Jonathan Taylor. Uh I'm a member. Okay, thank you, I was looking for that. I I'm a member of uh. The Calhoun's issue. It's been some times inside, they're here, this podium, this this board, and usually that you're you're. And that the podium is usually meaningful when you have a uh grievance or challenge to bring to the board. So I haven't been here a while. And I don't have a grievance, and I don't have a challenge. As a matter of fact, I'm even going the other way. I want to just say hello to you. And as some of you I've known, it seems a thing. I do want to compliment you on this beautiful building that was not here the last time I was here. Uh what I would like to leave in place of not having a grievance is to leave you with somewhat of a something to. Years ago, many years ago, thanks to affirmative action, I got a chance to be a member of the uh. I was a sworn firefighter in the county law championship. I said affirmative action and not knowing, you know, as long as a thought on the end of the board, and that's unfortunate. Because it was a very protective system for hiring and diversifying the workforce. And contrary to what most people think, it did not lower standards. It's quite the opposite was the truth, the greatest standard. And I'm bringing it up to you because you are building here and you're you're still constructing buildings, and I would like for you, in spite of and instead of affirmative action. If you could, just at least think in terms of some sort of goals of workplace diversity or for yourself here. And maybe this college can serve as a leader to other organizations, think of some standards of diversity that you could use to diversify your workforce. So you don't have to do a formal research project. If you just look, when you pass a emergency incident, look at the faces. The black faces have disappeared. They've disappeared. Well, in any retail store, you're hard pressed to find like faces. So I would say to you, you have a big job. Uh it's it's meant to be a big job. Uh you have entrusted the people, your call trustees. I thank you for working together in this building. And hopefully you continue to work hard to do more. So it's good to see you again, those I haven't seen in a long time, Dr. Curry. Uh Dr. Little, Miss Lopez, and President Ronald. So I thank you so much, Vice President. It's good to see all of you.
Thank you.
Next up is Nika Black.
Hello, student trustee, move forward. I'm Nika Black, fellow student trustee. Nice to meet you. Um I'm speaking on a non-agenda item regarding the M L D Hart Holyfield Library giving an update. Um unfortunately, Mr. Holyfield, he could not be present, but he does say his well wishes to everyone. Um we met with Dr. Curry to discuss the next step forward in getting the entire lead on the library. Um we're currently, it's a it's a work in progress. Um however, there is the discussion of payment. So together, in spirit of collaboration, we, I just want to let the board know that there is a discussion for a partnership with the college. For a fundraiser. The fundraiser will not only pay for uh the materials and labor needed to restore the full name. But offer scholarships for three students um for. However much money we're able to raise, hopefully a year's worth of education for those three selected students. Uh we haven't really finalized how that's supposed to work. Um however, that's that is the goal and that's what we want to do. Um also, I just want to raise the issue of um outdoor signage. Uh I know that we would probably have to come before the board to discuss that once more. However, I want to make it clear that that is the expressive request and desire of not just myself and Mr. Holyfield. But those who support us, that was always the intention to have outdoor signage. It's been in the letters of requests that I've submitted over the years. Um we will continue that. Um I just want to give food for thought, you know. My grandmother's first year as a trustee, she was forced to sit behind. Her fellow trustees, who were all male at the time. And that's not something I want for her in death. I don't want her hidden away. I want everyone to know who she is and what she's done for all of us here. Um it's kind of like. I have a bag of oranges and somebody took my bag of oranges away. And then ten years later, they say, okay, we're gonna give you half your bag of oranges. And then if you want the full bag, you gotta pay for it. But oh, after you pay for it, I'm gonna give you a bag of Brussels sprouts. So um with that analogy, I'm going to conclude. Unfortunately, uh I cannot stay for the entirety of the meeting. But again, I thank the board, everyone for their time. I thank Dr. Curry for his continued collaboration. And I hope to bring you guys more good news in the future. Thank you, have a good day.
Current more requests for speaking.
Moving on to item eight, point zero two, Compton College Board of Trustees' Speech Agenda Item Request. Are there any requests? Without any, oh. Trustee Dr.
Okay, um uh um. Doctor Curry, I don't know if this is a um future agenda item, but just um. Um point of clarification, I don't remember the last um, the last meeting. Where they have a great deal of discussion about um the next steps on the naming of the library. So I I could just, if I could just ask. If just for point of clarification, um. Outdoor signage, clarification on exactly what that is, that plaque outside of the building. Is it a name on the building? Would you just make clarification on that? Um. Um and just. Just again, to make sure, so there, so so the request that I'm asking is that as we um get to the final process. Of all these um. This process and activity around the naming of the library is that. Everyone is very clear on what the ask. The understanding. Because I know that there's been a lot of discussion about it, so as we are drawn to those, I just want to make sure that. Um that all parties are just so clear as to. What the ask is and and the expectation.
I can't speak, the item was not on agenda, but I'm gonna vote right now.
So I'm gonna go back to, is that a? Is that like, is that?
I didn't provide a picture. I was about to update the board. Uh I'll provide a people. Um regards to the city, I mean, what's going on. I can't talk about it because now.
Yes, I do.
Are there any other requests?
No, that's 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 my, nothing further.
Moving on to item nine, board of trustees meeting event. Do I hear a motion to put the events uh. On the board, board of trustees. Second.
I'll second, I'll second.
It's been made by Dr. Little and second is by trustee Dr. Moore. Is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, uh please place your online vote.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item ten, reporting from representatives and employee organizations. But first one is the associated state government report. And should. Should Myla, Sorel?
Hello, Lord. I'm a wish and I'm a proud of the industry as a. I would like to report to you guys about all of the. Fun activities we have coming up. Um this one says, we better start our training, the part of contact.
Moving on to the next report, academic senate report. It's Sean Moore.
Hello, everybody. I hope you're doing well. I'm Sean Moore. I'm the incoming academic senate president. I don't have a full report today, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to say hello and just give you a little bit of little information about me, background. I came in two thousand sixteen, about a year ago. I had a wonderful opportunity to spearhead the cosmetology department. Uh me and Steve Alex, who's known on the world, is in portion, uh we both led that together. Uh I've been the career coordinator for the past five years, and I've also been the vice president of the academic senate. The last year. Um as part of the academic senate executive board, I had a wonderful opportunity to be part of our shared governance business that we recently had. And I was very optimistic about working with all of you as we move forward. I've got the best implement all of these potential recommendations that are moving this coming forward. When I envision us moving forward, I always see us coming together with a common goal. And I might as well see us one day win the X award. But I think together, I'm very optimistic that in the next few years, it will be a possibility. Uh so with that being said, I appreciate your time. Please reach out to me if you need anything, and I'm very excited to work with you. Thank you.
Moving on to the next report, um certified employees report. Doctor David Chavez. I I don't see him here, so. Moving on to the next report classified employees report, uh a mental health. And I don't see him here either. So moving on to item eleven, presentation, Dr. Curry.
Uh thank you very much for the word, since we have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one is Compton College, Calhoun's candidate candidate. And I'm invited by Dr. Michelle.
So, boy, it's crazy for the week today. I'm here to talk to you about the work you've done in the Calhoun's Department here at Compton College. You involve our program components, our students, courses and stuff, and our departmental. So Calhoun's oversees and works on programming, having to do with funding coming from the Calhoun's opportunity and responsibilities. It's also numerous Calhoun's temporary existence, bringing new families, which is canon, and California's great avenues for individuals, which are free. And all of these three come together to provide financial, educational, and workforce support to willing companies of new base. Calhoun's at Compton College. Our department specifically is the specific meaning point of entry for Calhoun's participants to work on educational goals approved by the Department of Social Services. And also. Our mission is to advance Calhoun's family's success and self-sufficiency through educational excellence and workforce. This is a recent picture of our end of year event and all of our bright faces, um and we had fifteen graduates who attended uh to receive their. Our staff, uh we are fully staff for the first time in five years. And we are very excited to have Jen Janis, who was our program technician, Kimberly Arrows, who was our program specialist. But Enavie Ariel, who is our GDP counselor, and Jasmine Martinez, who is our new SS advisor, who just joined us this month. This staff uh supports uh this, last year we supported one hundred and ninety students who completed. And the services that we offer, um or student services, sorry, the services we still operate as assistance with the Department of Public Social Services. Paperwork, judicial action, vocational personal counseling, student advocacy and case management, referrals to campus and community resources. We have a specialized Calhoun's work study program, and we also offer educational supplies for students and verification of books and supplies through D P S S. Focusing on our Calhoun's work study program specifically, it's a much needed program for our students who are very excited to offer it. Students can gain valuable on job training for up to twenty hours a week. We offer flexible schedules without interruption studies. The salary earned does not count against the student's monthly cash aid. Um we also assist with resume development and preparation for a job search. And then finally, network building opportunities for students. Now looking toward engagement, during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four advocacy year, there were twenty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-eight contacts made with students. Via meetings, indoor assistance, phone calls, text messages, and interactions through our Calhoun's campus shop. We had four hundred and thirty-six student appointments booked and attended within even split between in-person and remote method of connection. Education plans, assistance with county forms, and staff outreach to students were the top three main appointment reasons closed used. We had one hundred and ninety-four early alerts that were managed and closed. And then finally, Calhoun's offered a combination of sixty-six workshops, recruitment sessions, and drop-in virtual support groups this past. And this is is an overview of some of the workshops that we operate throughout. Now moving on to our. As you can see, over the last five years, we've worked hard to outreach and recruit additional students from our local area to the offensive. Um as I mentioned before, we reached one hundred and ninety-six students um served this last second, third year, which we are really proud of. Our students ethnicity wise are either Hispanic slash Latino and or African American. And our students range from thirty to thirty-four, uh followed by twenty-five to twenty-nine. So we are servicing re-entries. Next was our successive retention. Our retention has done well. We've we've checked it up. And we really work hard to outreach our students and check in on them and make sure that they. Our retention has done well. We've we've checked it up and we really work hard to outreach our students and check in on them and make sure that they feel. Heard and supported um and success. Our success has helped study also throughout the last three years. Looking at awards um during the twenty two, twenty three year, which is the most recent that we can access and we have seventeen degrees and nine. Now moving to the part that I love personally, which is support. So first, um we chose to highlight Rolando Pintero. We do have three Calworks fathers. Uh we mostly serve. Um single mothers and we're excited to highlight one of our uh single fathers. I never thought getting laid off was one could be a blessing in disguise. However, that's when I realized I needed to make changes. I studied hard to obtain my G E B, which is something I always thought of doing, but didn't make the time to do so. Once I met that goal, I knew I wanted to continue searching for something that would provide me with a better future. Which is when I discovered the C and C machine operator program at Compton College. I was blessed to get into the program, giving me a second chance, not only to pursue a career that will secure my future, but also the opportunity to provide my family. Powers have been an instrument, a part of my educational journey, supporting me in every way. Next, Cheyenne Bradley. Throughout my time in school, I have completed my prerequisites for nursing and received my associate's degree in biological and physical sciences. Along with an associate's degree in social and behavioral sciences. Soon I will earn an associate's degree in arts and humanities, all while doing my best to maintain a fourth final GPA. I would like to obtain my bachelor's in science and nursing so that I can continue to help people in me. Having the presence of power screen has provided me with the opportunities for a better future for my children and me. And then finally, one last highlight, Ashley Bayes. Embracing my sec- my second semester at Compton College, I'm deeply appreciative of the campuses and laboring support, especially towers for single parents like myself. Driving to build a career. As a dedicated nursing student maintaining a fourth final GPA, Compton College's assistance enables me to excel academically while actively participating in my children's extraterrestrial practice. And then finally, moving to our department goals. Over this last year, this is the view of the goal that we've achieved. We visited and met with several local D P S S games, region offices to bolster partnership referrals. Which had been on hold because a lot of the departments that close. Uh and this really helped with reconnecting uh with our partners, our community partners. We revamped our work study case management system and applications to be more student centered. Created a kid friendly student study space within our office. Partnering with faculty to start the process of establishing a light ergon campus, and three will be installed this fall twenty three four. Create a student spotlight series showcasing students in all various stages of their educational journey. And focused on recruitment and support of more students, parents serving on campus communities. Looking forward to twenty four, twenty five, we want to continue strengthening our common partnerships. This last end of year event was the first time we had a game region director attending our end of year celebration, and we were very excited to hear our students speaking at that end of year event. We want to continue uh expanding our professional boundaries for towers, where it's a new student, during the support system for graduating transferring tower students. Create more how to videos to aid our students with county paperwork. Expand our small scholar spaces across campus. And then finally, department adaptation and hanging and anticipation of our new bar required report. Question.
That's the entire by there. Pressing. Press the double.
First of all, thank you so much for the report. Um and just had a public open page thirteen, you know, second intention percentages. If you put his eighteen. How many students are we? Seven hundred and sixty. So for twenty two, twenty three, that would have been out of one. Is passage of. Classes. You know, success. There's so that those forty. Um yeah, oh, we have offered additional. Um we are also looking to partner with the library to have kind of adults who are tutors in our space. Um with students. Um and then there are also other um items that come in a way when it can start our students, so they are trying everything. Um sometimes game workers require them to change their educational goal if they're not doing well. Uh the county has now also been retired that we start uh reporting new students or what they think they're high risk or on the. And so there there are also other.
Yeah, just one. Space in the office. So are there activities for the kids or what is that?
Yeah, so what we have found when we created our space was that uh students would come in, they're they're doing transactional work. Um however, the children were sitting with they had idle. Um and so what we did was we increased um a few different donations. We have small employees that can break anything. We have sample books. We have a whiteboard for them to draw on, so they don't go on the wall. Um and we just created it for the children to be able to be busy while their parents did whatever they needed to do with the office. We also have um some dolls there for them that reflect our student population. Um so that they feel like there is a space here at the college for them.
Thank you. Our hope that we will continue to share this story online.
Yeah, let's see. Let's see.
Um yes, just um to um. Ask another question on the um. On the small scholar space. Um do you know uh how many of the students that are in the program actually utilize the early. How would education uh facility that's on. I don't have that on the thoughtful, I guess, but I can get that. Um and I'm pretty sure it's in terms of. Maybe expanding some of the program areas. Because um a lot of the students, they're also of student parents. And having a a break maybe during um. Midterm or finals uh season during the semester. You know, maybe you can offer. Maybe extended hours or additional um programs, saving evening for those to allow um our student parents. Any other time. They want to. Uh to focus on.
So we can follow back, I think the question is a little problematic because the students who purchase things outside of the program. Regardless, having to go through that process. So either we're to extend it, still have these students that were approved. For their children to be able to participate in our child. But we can follow back up on the question regarding to how many the Calworks program participants. You also mentioned how many students participate. Uh our student, who has children who are a part of the. And then we could look at what the options are available to support students for the finals. But I think that's that's a separate conversation for my child. But also too, we don't. I need, we don't know. We don't know the need, how these students are looking for child support or child, that's right, child care in the evenings or during during the.
Okay. And I just have one other question too about some of the um. Um some of the additional um workshops or programs that's offered. Um in addition. Do you assist uh the students that are in the program with um of uh utilizing the Calworks benefits? Is that part of the program? Is that part of some of the services? Yes, when we talk about going through the paperwork. Yes, that's part of our general services. So the students, we have a drop in hours. And we also have appointments, so they can make an appointment to have a set time that we're setting for their uh for their children's schedule. But then we also offer drop in, offer drop in, and that is for utilizing their benefits, um doing any people work that we did, verification forms from your family. Or helping them activate if their new worker has denied something, yet we get on the phone with the worker and have a. To make sure that they that they're utilizing all of their benefits. Because you mentioned, I think you said if you're not, I mean, students that are not, like, I forget the term that you use, but just. Um not overlapping what's in the other. Programs that uh that those students might be eligible for as well. Said in the beginning. Okay, um we definitely make sure that that they are utilizing all of their um benefits as they're able to get. Oh, was it about work setting? Then it doesn't count. Um not counting against your eight minutes, but um when you were doing recount. Oh, you were saying so so students that are not, don't they think? Which people didn't think in other programs. It was a term that he was, it's fine, okay. It's fine. If you're quick, you are making sure that all of the students are whatever programs or services that. They are eligible, they're eligible, they're like those students are utilizing all of those programs in addition to your. Yes, definitely.
Yes, well, she kind of asked some of the questions that I had, but just touching bases on that. So um if a student was in Calworks, they pick up. Are they able to be in your P N S as well?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So I didn't have to go to work at that. That's wonderful. Um and then just kind of just uh letting you guys know, I think, which guys, we don't have Calworks, it's a wonderful, um all the programs and things that you guys have. I love that um. The uh meditation, I think a lot of students uh need that. I know um us as table, when I was in A S G, we were trying to do meditation day as well. So it's nice to know that you guys are arguing that. So people.
Uh I I just wanted to say thank you for the. The next presentation from the doctor. Who's a soon.
Good evening. How does that name doctor? Yeah, Owen Jackson. So I'm gonna give a facilities update. I do this annually. Uh going over facilities accomplishments, our current facilities projects and the twenty twenty four, twenty five facilities priorities. In November twenty fourteen, Compton Community Political Residence authorized issuance of one hundred million in generalization. Uh some of the major facilities projects that we each. Almost completed, but are currently occupied. Our student services building. And instructional building two, which we just moved into recently. Student services building, we've been working with the architect T V P and P C M three and of course, Tele Q C M. To finish this student services project. This project originally demolished an old library. The old library building, and we built a one stop shop for student services. And district staff moved in in April last year, twenty twenty three. Construction is about ninety nine percent complete. We've still got some items to complete for our acoustics, the wood paneling. That is currently, you see on the sec- around the second floors, at the ceiling and at the second first floor uh around the ceiling. The building punch list is almost done. We have all one project meeting. Next project, instructional building two, same individual players, the T V P, P C M three, Tele Q. Uh the project's about ninety percent complete. We should snap in June fourteen, which is very recently. Demo of D R O D site work and landscape should be complete by twenty twenty four. However, if you were to look out. And where G rose at, you would see the vast majority of it already toppled. So. It's really exciting, I know, for individuals that are zero to look out and see the new instructional building two. And I'm sure it's just exciting for those in I B two to look over and see zero. So we're gonna continue working on those, uh finishing that project. Administration renovation uh project also same players, except we had to rebid this project. To get it under our construction budget of two point five million, which we were able to do. Uh the contractor is M L C contracting. They've done an amazing job. We did a preliminary walkthrough with some of the future inhabitants. And they were all really blown away with the modification. It looks totally different from when they had last been in the space. Uh we had planned to go out with H VAC in the roofing project to bid that portion. However, we may have to hold off about a year. We gotta, we have to complete everything through the division of the state architect before we can jump into another project. So um we had an air balancing today for the H tracking building. The building pulls perfectly, so which is great news. Um estimated completion for all the other work we intend to do in the space, which include flooring. Uh as well as for for Dr. Curry and Billia and Catalina's area. Uh we already put new carpet in the old work room, we're new, red that work quarter. So we're moving right along with that. Uh moving for admin services, human resources and community relations. And that's planned for December uh or early spring of twenty twenty. Vocational technology building renovation. That project, we've had ongoing meetings. We're gonna reconfigure the space to improve the cosmetology program. We're gonna expand the H P A C. Program area as well as update the welding area. We received additional funding from Congresswoman Maxine Waters for eight hundred and fifty thousand, so pleased with that. Uh estimated completion to be determined, but we're still having ongoing meetings. Next project is the visual performing arts complex. That architect is Truware, project manager, P C M three. We're going to demolish the three existing buildings in Y area. But we also have to upgrade the little theater. So we did some preliminary testing for that space. We submitted all the information back to the division of the state architect, and we're awaiting some final feedback. As to next steps, whether we have to continue to upgrade the existing drawings or will be able to move forward with what we proposed initially. So we're just waiting for D S A's response uh with completing completion to be determined based on when we finally get some feedback from the vision of state architect. Next project is our physical education complex. Project and the architect of record is true air, P C M three. This project also has to be rebid. So the bids came in over budget. So we're working on value engineering and trying to reduce the scope so that we can revisit the project. And hopefully the bits come coming within our uh budget of forty five plus five point. So completion T V D, but we're working on the rebate package term. Next project is our student housing project. The architect of record is H P I group or Hill Partnership, as they were formerly known. Uh gap town P M C M and. We are, we bid that project. And again, we're gonna have to, we're in the process of doing value engineering. Of cutting, modifying. The drawings so that hopefully when we go out to bid again, it'll come within our project budget. Uh you know, Dr. Curry has also requested additional funds from the state. See if they will supplement that eighty point three million. Uh we're still, so of course, we're still in phase one. It's two hundred and fifty one beds, ninety thousand square feet and three story. The location, if you're not aware, is just north of this building, but south of parking lot that. So it will sit in the park area that's uh between this building and parking lot that. Uh completion estimated for spring twenty twenty seven with ongoing meetings. Our twenty twenty four, twenty five facilities priority. We're estimating to complete our twenty thirty five master. Or facilities master plan in November twenty twenty four. So we've been having uh various meetings with stakeholders. Uh you've heard all about it for those who attended last month from Gensler. Along with our stakeholders on campus, we've been moving those that that our new facilities plan forward. Uh we're planning to complete the following projects, of course, instructional. Uh, we're planning to complete the following projects. Of course, instructional building two. The administration building renovation, the P complex. The visual and performing arts complex and student housing. Additional priorities, we're continuing the planning of the vocational technology renovation. Our N S building renovation, which is tied in with our math science building renovation. The A B B Sykes Junior Child Development Center renovation, which we submitted to the state for uh funding. Our maintenance building renovation replacement, which we submitted to the state as an initial project proposal just this past, early this month. It was due July one. Uh, we've also got plans for solar array and electric charging stations and various parking. Future planning. Demolish C roads. Uh, renovate building D twenty seven, twenty nine for basic needs. Instructional building three, which will be a new science builder. And then the student union slash conference center and the athletic fields and state. Any question? I'm not sure this is a question uh for you bringing this product. But we probably got, but as far as um student thousand. Um, as far as I can get things on how thousand will be uh given out, you said that there will be two hundred dollars students. Fifty one, yes, I'm hearing two fifty one. So I mean, I'm just wondering how would that be like converted or, you know? Okay, yes. You know how that will be converted for students here on campus. Um, first come, first served or?
So we're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, we're, we're in that process right now with uh roles, our insulting working on that and we provide work basically in the board. The goal right now, we're gonna work on policies. Then also the word figure out the whole application process and what is that right, yeah, the work room. And so we'll be following that company, that's a work room, uh status, then also regards to policies. So if you give us a couple of months, we'll provide work based on that application process. Our focus right now is to process that out to me. But at the same time, you want to address your questions as well, because people will be asking that.
Exactly, yeah. Um, as far as um how the bidding goes, um how long, like how long does it normally take for you, for you to get a new bid on these types of projects that you're talking to? So currently, we're still meeting and going over the value engineering, uh just modifying the scope to reduce and minimize it, and hopefully get it within the budget. Uh, but our plan is to go back out to bid in September. Okay, in September, okay. Of this year. Awesome. You also brought up the solars. Um, I know that that was brought up, I believe, last meeting. Um, if I was on the last meeting, I didn't know that was finalized, so. It's not. Okay. But it's in the plan. Okay. It's always been a part of our plan as we completed, okay, closer to completing all the projects that are on campus. We go turn over to solar. For the parking lots, again. Okay, thank you for your time.
Doctor Little.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Um, on the, on the second building, so do you have like goals, uh percentage goals of how many we need, building in the process there?
We, we are not leaving, however, we have to follow uh seven point four, which has granted um, but we have to leave and we don't have to go.
So we're possible, we are maybe that's equalization as we move forward. For the utility that we're doing in terms of the transition as well.
Correct.
Okay. And then in terms of, there are questions that was raised by community members, oh, we are, do we have the agreements? Um, as it relates to minority hiring or community hiring to project.
We currently have um we do a limited agreement that we use for um student services building. Project and we're also going to explain the agreement for the P complex project. Uh, we're working with the trades, with very straight organizations um to work with individuals who are in the zip codes that are listed within the community and good agreement. And with that we're able to touch the local residents within uh the agreement and within those zip codes.
No targets or goals, it's just a general.
Um, the goal is to get as many local as possible, always. And it's continuously.
So we have a report. Those numbers. Um, I do work with Dr. Curry to see what we can get from the trade, the local trade organizations.
But also too, we, we can work with the um the organization that we have with regards to um prevailing wages and looking at the number of individuals by two code. Have you brought some into the board for regards to that? We can follow that up with the license.
Okay, so like local hire reasons, I know that there's a lot of work being done in construction phase.
So with our, and this is another time, what we can do is this can go another topic for us to meet the people's agreement. We provide more information about that and supporting the work.
Thanks.
Let's see, welcome.
Um, yes, um, thank you, um, doctor. Um, on the, on, on the P complex have you mentioned um rebidning that there was some can you, can you speak a little bit um on like what considerations um were being considered to bring uh that complex so then went into the budget?
So one of the big items for the ready run, there's a big switch. It goes around, what looks like a Nike symbol. Yeah, so that's what they call it, the switch. Um, so yeah, we're diving that back. Just trying to get within reason to give us, we want more in the building than outside of it.
So it's more on the aesthetics, not necessarily more like gonna give us, you know, like, you know, downsize our Olympic size pool?
We cannot. We would have to invest money back to the state. So the state has requirements that we have to meet and we cannot change the program size. So we're just changing the plot.
Okay, so it's more on the aesthetics, not necessarily what was going to be um the services that were going to be provided, no reduction, so it's obviously. And then the other, um, I know there was a lot of um T V D dates. More to come on the other T V D dates because I, I know it's a lot, it's a lot that's it's a lot that's uh in the works already, so it's just kind of the dates, the, the due dates, the patient dates.
No, and, and right now, our focus is on the uh P E complex. Including the structural building number two and then also the um student housing and, and, and in a day, it's our capacity, how much can we do? And so right now, we're doing some rebidning and some change scope for two projects. And we also have to figure out the vocational technology building and also the the math sign building, which I talked about in about agenda. But trying to determine those days with the leading project that we have is, is impossible. And so right now, we're simply focusing, from my perspective, on the P E complex. We have to focus on student housing and also clear instructional building number two. And then we can move forward with these other projects uh as we move forward, but it's just our capacity. And we don't have the data out there right now for some of these projects, but we don't know what is going to be completed. So then we'll come back to the board for a different day later on. Once we have a clear out, a clear date for these projects, our T V D right now, we will make sure that the board of trustees are. We know more so once we rebuild the projects.
And so the only one really that's uh rebid is the P complex?
We made the P complex and it's too high.
Okay. Okay, bye.
As you have, Tim, who was from St. John's, who is providing the presentation of St. John's Community Health, was one of our biggest partners, has been successful. I would say favorite first of all. So um as you can see, I mean, it's always worth, especially as we see this upsurge of COVID again, it's uh always important. So remember having vaccinations to provide here at the college partnership. With Dr. Keith's office and his department. Uh, we vaccinated twenty four thousand eight hundred and ninety nine people. So. On the next slide, you see the steady increase in patient visits uh at the college health center. This year, we're looking at, at, at that maybe it worth five thousand visits. So that's a lot of students and some community members who are accessing Nelson. Um, the next uh slide breaks down the medical behavioral health visits. So you can see um how many are medical, how many behavioral health. And you can see as well, it's just a steady rise. We had a drop last year. Um, then you can see where, where, where all and then we have uninsured and uninsured. And as you can see, our our, our insured patients are, we're steadily increasing with the medical expansion. Although we're seeing a little bit of an influx now of uninsured patients, so we're doing a lot of work uh to, to enroll them into medical. So given it's only half the year, you see that there's a significant percentage of uninsured. Most of those, given that almost everyone is eligible for medical or for COVID California. Most of those adds the three month, the four month process of getting them enrolled into medical, that number will come down, the number sure will go up. We see each other. Um, over the last five years, you can see we treated nine thousand patients for sexually transmitted diseases. Seventy six hundred patients were treated for depression. Um, there are two hundred and twenty four patients with hypertension, five hundred and six patients behavioral health issues, anxiety. Seventeen fifteen patients received by childhood immunizations. Hundred thirty one patients were treated for asthma. Hundred twenty one for cold and flu. Hundred seventeen patients treated, treated for irregular ventilation issues. Um, so we do a lot of wellness health in the health center. Uh, sixty six patients were treated for throat infections. Um, we have a hundred and twenty patients with diabetes and three patients with C L P D. Um, so then we, we've worked it down for the demographic data. You can see that um we're seeing a small number of community members. That number is um this year promises to kind of be moving back up. Um, but you can see the, the number of students are substantial. So we've seen close to twenty five two thousand five hundred and eighty one this year. And we're only happy three years, so that'll be over five thousand. So most of the folks who are accessing the health center are still students. You know, we're doing our region community and inviting the community um to access the, the the services as well. Many of those community members are family members of students. Uh, but that's uh also with the, we said, those are the person. And then this is just a snapshot of some of the campus elements that we've had. And, you know. I think what I want to emphasize today is just how the, the community health center here continues to grow. Um, serve more students, provide more visits, uh and provide a lot of support. Students that are in there. So we, this is really one of our most important sites. Maybe it's a model around the country for what a community health center and a co- and a community college can do to partner together. So any questions or comments or thoughts? Let's see, Tom.
Uh, well, first of all, let's say thank you for partnering with um us as a community college. Um, one, what is your hours of operation?
We're open five days a week, so Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Um, and then it's two days a week, we're open till seven. And then we have the basis.
Okay. Uh, my next question is, so um out of all the diagnoses that you mentioned that you have, um, came across with, um, the students are on uh on campus people, what are, what policies are put in place to help um them after you have diagnosed it with this and what also what programs um are you partnered with to help our students?
So we're, we're partnering with the Department of Public Health, particularly on the S T I crisis. Uh, throughout Illinois County, it looks like most areas are really seeing an epidemic of sexually transmitted diseases, particularly among the, amongst young people. So we're partnering with the Department of Public Health. Uh, we hired a cadre of community health promoters um and health educators to really intervene uh and start to do an intensive education uh with, with patients and students about how to avoid S T Is and how to access treatment. Um, we are seeing a steady decline in S T I rates, so a lot of those nine thousand that we saw over the last forty years uh were in the first two years of operation. There's definitely seeing those numbers come down. Uh, and I'll provide Dr. Card, we're, we're just finishing up our uh annual uh report to the federal government, so B V S or the B V S report. And it kind of gives you all the diagnoses for each of your sites. Uh, and we have twenty four sites, college is one. Um, and I'll send that information because you, you'll be able to see in that report that there's a, there's a steady decline. S T I rates at the content health center and, and throughout our health centers. Intensive education. We also have diabetes classes, so we teach um folks with diabetes how to cook uh and shop and cook with healthy ingredients, cook effectively with healthy ingredients. Uh, so I mean, most of the population of the health center here is grownups, you don't see as high rates of diabetes and hypertension as we do at other sites. Uh, but we are, you know, we do have access, uh in those that do have diabetes to these classes, that has a big impact on your blood sugar level.
Um, touching bases on the depression. Um, is there, um, has, is there like a high uh level of depression here? And what programs are you giving for our students if they're testing uh for depression?
We're seeing more anxiety disorders, diet issues, um, students here. In other sites, we see more depression.
Okay.
Uh, but we are um doing a lot of therapy. So we have full time uh therapist here on the second.
No, I heard you say, is that free or?
Yes, all our services.
Okay.
If, if I can get a gentleman on the board of dinner tonight, uh want to ask him is the updated contract for behavioral services for St. John's. So we use in some of the mental health outlets, we see the state, we're gonna have a full time person there providing services. And that's why I've seen the uptick in the numbers with the reputation. You see that now he has like full time, that provide their services in contract. So we look at that increase, that's why.
Right, thanks. Thanks. Um, are you guys providing any booster shots? Awesome, so thank you for your time.
Doctor Little.
Thank you so much. Um, you put the report, great partnership, all the ones, you know, that we see the uptick and COVID, I'm just wondering if we're doing any kind of bigger campaign or no, but we had it before because St. John's was only like in this area. They didn't want to come to the area here. Um, but is there more of a campaign that we're doing from here than Dr. Curry?
You know, I think um all of the dollars that were available to support outreach around COVID, the dry up. And um, so we are doing um, you know, pressuring the, the information, we are to allow reach. Um, but you know, during the COVID pandemic, we were the partner of television. Social media advertisements and all kinds of stuff to drive people to vaccinate. And it was extremely successful. We vaccinated, St. John's alone vaccinated, oh, six hundred thousand people. Um, but there, you know, there's all of that funding is dried up. And so, you know, we're, you know, back to, to kind of dress, we're door to door at the events, at the food markets, at the farmers markets, to educate people.
Do we do have newer banks things available for the part community that we did before?
Yes.
Okay, and then finally for like a diabetes class, then is there a lot of people who are, who then take a class or talk? How might they find? Website or?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's on the website. I mean, certainly coming to the point where they have nice mail flyers. Um, and we do it on a different site, so we have diabetes. So we have diabetes classes in Compton.
Okay.
And, you know, we have a demonstration kitchen, so, you know, actually teaching classes. And yet, we have four nutritionists on staff, one is just. So we're doing a lot of work. We have four health centers in Compton. And so about forty to forty-five percent of everyone who lives in Compton. Receives their health care services at St. John's. So we have a real security department in Compton, it's kind of the center of a lot of our work. And so the diabetes classes, you know, we try to focus a lot on prevention. So, you know, we have a podiatrist that does, you know, foot screenings for diabetics. To make sure that, you know, they don't want to increase in blood and breathing. We do the eye exams. All the diabetic patients, that we can check their eyesight. So this is just sort of, you know, in the practices of all, we probably have about eighteen thousand people with diabetes. So it's a big part of the work.
Thank you so much, Dr. Currie. Because it's really a feature agenda item, but I request that in some capacity, whether on our website and a lot of the great work that we're already doing. Community, there's some kind of spotlight on different offerings at here on campus. And obviously beyond the campus. And then numbers, we get enough information, enrollings. Non-positive about the campus. And I think providing actual truth and facts. About holistic offerings here to be on the website as soon as people log in. Thank you, thank you so much.
Rusty.
Thank you for your work.
Rusty.
Yes, I do just have a question. And I know that it's, you talked about what the women's health services that are provided. But I'm just, I just always want to give a voice to our veteran students too. Because we're, that's an increased population as well. And I know that a lot of times when we think about it, you said, well, we have the VA. But like sometimes a smaller, more intimate setting. And you might not even know that that student or that individual is service-connected. But I just, I just wanted to know if there's, in terms of the therapists, some of the other staff members? If they are sensitive to serving the veteran population as well? And, and if there is, let's just say, if there is a student that could be connected to the VA. Or tap into some of their services, all of the benefits and services that's afforded to them. Would, would you extend or have that relationship or insight to connect? You know, to bridge that gap, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so St. John's is a veteran hiring site.
Veteran hiring site, that's it.
It is a unit by the federal government. So a lot of our staff. So we do a lot of training generally with our staff. By veterans, I would imply around veteran services, veterans' sanctuaries, and college home competency. So those are very important issues. And our benefits council, every site has a benefits council or two, depending on the size. And they're all well-versed in how to enroll people into all the programs in their algorithm. Elderly, all the adults, veterans programs, you know, the brothers and the VA. Enrollment in the Medi-Cal, public health one, the health insurance block. And other services that people can access.
Okay, but thank you, that's all I.
Thank you.
We treat children here, right? Babies, I think that's another highlight we need to push to.
We have a provider who specializes, we have some family providers.
We have exam and family.
And we're not just adding a second provider. So we'll have pediatrician.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that presentation, thank you. And that concludes all of our presentations for today. Moving on to items as well. The consent item. Right here, a motion to approve. Is there a second? It's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by Rusty Locas. Are there any items that our members would like to discuss? Rusty Locas? Rusty Doppel one?
Yes, twelve, three. And twelve, seven.
We'll start with. Rusty.
So Dr. Currie, the, the. The council, the seat council, that is a council. Yes, so that is, so that is representing. All sacred to include the, the chair and the chair, which is you and I get.
That goes Sean Moore.
So Sean Moore is the chair, okay, got it. So that's, that is it on number, what did they say? Twelve oh two. And then on twelve oh three, I didn't see it was mentioned and if I missed that, I do apologize. But with the, like the copyright, would the copyright also include some of the digital, say, online content that's created?
Yeah.
Yeah?
No, but yes, it does. Yeah, we can go back and review the policy further. This is a big issue regarding security, kind of like on items that are utilized on the website. We do that a lot of times. And we need to approve, so you can't be sued.
Like the video?
Any videos, images?
And then on twelve. Twelve oh seven. You mentioned the updates, what are the, the updates? Is it like twice a year?
Yeah, so, so the issue regards, the reason why this is being brought forward. There's some of the board's policies and mission regulations that are brought forward, regulations from CCLC. There are no substantive changes, such as ankle number change or the accreditation standard changes. So for example, the accreditation standards have changed. So instead of coming back with every single policy, it shows a change because the standards have changed. We didn't be able to have, we can't have it upgraded to update and share the information with the board, what changed that was in.
So it will just reflect the track changes?
No, yeah, it's correct, the track changes. However, these are non-substantive. If we were to do it the other way, that means the board would have to do a first read and also a second read on does something change. And we have done this before, when we changed the name for the associates to the body, from the association to the government. To the, sorry, associated to the body, associates to the government. Which is not a subject.
And then, thank you for that presentation. Fine, and then on twelve ten. On twelve ten, this is, are these, is this something that is? In addition to the original, I guess, like the, like the service agreement? Or is it just an extension? Because, because it's listed twice, so that's why I was a little confused. It's twelve ten and twelve eleven. So one is a survey, right? Twelve, I believe that twelve of.
Yeah, so they're two different things. So one is the, so two different items. Twelve ten, twelve ten is the, the software for allowing time-saving measures, right? That's one. Then the second one has to do with evaluation.
Twelve eleven?
And it's included in the mental services. So there's two different types of work.
Yes, yes. And that's all I had, I was ready, I just put the question.
Is there any other discussion from the board?
I just have one quick question about the course eval. In terms of the number. Is this a limited number of the software?
Oh, I don't think there's a restriction in regards to how many, is, is based off the course evaluation. So I don't know if there's a restriction, but we can follow that up. Thank you.
Okay. The schedule of student evaluations is every three years, right? So if there were ever to be any kind of alterations, two years, one year.
That would have to be sort of negotiated.
I know, but I was saying, that contract would change. Thank you.
You don't have a limitation on the use of this on?
Right, that's what I was trying to ask.
There any other discussion from the board? Seeing no further, just to place your online vote.
Thinking unanimous, yes.
Moving on to action, I, actually. Item thirteen, action items. Thirteen point zero one, resolution number seven dash sixty dash twenty, I mean, four D ordering and election. Establishing specification of the election order. Is there a motion? Moved by Rusty Locas, seconded by Rusty Doppel one.
Yeah, so this is very brought forward to the board trustees. To approve the potential bond measure for community competition. And the amount of, to generate two million dollars. The cost per one hundred thousand dollars assessed valuation would be twenty, twenty dollars per, where a thousand dollars. Assessed valuation of property home. We anticipate that would generate sixteen point one five million dollars for community competition to support facilities. Our goals, which we mentioned a little bit last month, regards to, and also today, regards to some of the projects. Would include a, a new structure building three, which would be a science building for the campus. If you look at our current facility for our math science, we set aside money to renovate the building. But if we want to be able to compete with other community colleges within our area, we need a standard art science building. It's important what we're doing in science, technology, engineering, and also mathematics. We also included funding for a new student union slash conference center. If you look at our current facility that our student government is housed in, and also space regards to conferences. As you know, our campus is used not only by our student, our student organization and also departments. But it's also used by the community as well. So that's another project for us, for Compton College. We're also including funding for the stadium in regards to bleachers and renovating the bleachers. And also creating new bleachers for community college teacher. We also included funding for our athletic fields, which we, we all know that we need practice fields to support athletics on our campus. We also included funding for the quad development, also park improvements, I mentioned about that a little bit. Infrastructure upgrades and also landscaping improvements as well. Also including, and the bond would include a decent dollar for the location technology, whatever they suggest. And then also the math science renovation project. And so, and also the final piece would be, that'll support our health center. For making a twenty-four seven day health center on our campus to be able to provide that for our students and also for community. What happens to housing on campus is in our benefit to be able to have twenty-four seven healthcare provided on campus. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Is there any discussion from the board? Any no discussion, please place your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to thirteen point zero two, administrative services, Compton, including the college district, resolution number. Zero seven dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-four, to the question rank, transferred organization for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion? This is second. Moved by Rusty Locas, seconded by Rusty Doppel one. Is there, is there any discussions on the board? Any no discussion on the board, please place your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes.
Moving on to thirteen point zero three, administrative services contract over. Fourteen thousand five hundred, number understanding of St. John's community health. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Rusty Doppel one, seconded by Rusty Locas, is there any discussion?
Just one quick question about very, this obligation. And what we just discovered, putting the bond for community vote. These separate monies that the bond would be covering for improved or increased or. Can you differentiate?
Yeah, so I, so thirteen point zero three is a different thing, right? So I want, and I want to explain this as well. So we received a hundred forty-three thousand dollars from the Strong Workforce Investment Board for our health professionals partnership. And what we did was we created through our governance committee, our status, our standing committee. We're creating, we're transferring three hundred thousand dollars to St. John's. To be able to hire the project manager to be able to support this partnership. So we provided updates to the board in regards to our health professional partnership, which includes community vice district, engine, community health. St. John's community health, Compton College, Charles T. University. And so the whole goal was create this pipeline. So now we have a full-time staff member working with St. John's. As a, to be able to implement activities associated with our health professional partnership. And the positions funded to be here.
That means everything from all aspects of healthcare profession, all of these different partner organizations. And potentially our nursing students and.
But that's yet, a part of that partnership and the, and the scope of work that we included previously. When the board approved the MOU for the health professional partnership. Now the responsibility of the person getting hired will be able to assist the district in implementing those activities.
Give us, bring us feedback and things and metrics on.
Correct, and working with the partners as well.
So separate and above is part of the brand, so it's not G P percent.
No.
Is there any other discussions on the board? Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes.
Moving on to thirteen point zero four, administrative services contracts over one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred. Ratification, protected insurance program for schools, joint powers of authority, is there a motion? It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Rusty Locas. Is there any discussion from the board?
Yes, since it's for like our bodies, the part of, what do you mean for power than returning it far, by bringing protect me, what is this?
So this is our, great question. This is our, because our workers comp fund. And so this basically for the district, this must have been paid out to be a part of this.
Is there any other discussions? Any no discussion, please place your online vote.
That's the unanimous yes though.
Moving on to thirteen point zero five, administrative services contracts over one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred. Ratification statewide association of community colleges. Statewide Association of Community Colleges pro forma. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to thirteen point zero six, administrative services contracts over one hundred fourteen thousand five hundred, St. John's Community Health Center. Wait, there a motion? It's been moved by trustee Dopplemore, seconded by trustee Lopez. Aren't we having discussion?
So this is the contract regarding the um behavioral services.
At least if the clinical social worker and that, then maybe the nutrition. And we will promote that we have for our services and continue to get great updates on. Like we got today.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, um please place your online vote.
That's the unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to thirteen point zero seven, facilities planning and development contracts over one hundred fourteen thousand five hundred. Uh an amendment for C E W U P Education Construction Insurance Instructional Building Two. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote. That concludes action items. Moving on to fourth, uh item four, discussion action.
Yeah, so we have an update on our full-time equipment students. Uh we provided, as you can see, our home is up. We're doing very well. The goals continue to push for fall semester. We have a community news better has gone out, our community report is going out on the next couple of weeks. And then we also have a new registration postcard, which is going to be amazing. And once we release it to you, you will see why it's amazing. We're really excited about that in the next couple of. Wonder who approved what's on.
Yes, he smiled, he's on it.
So really excited about that, but the goal right now is to, to recruit. If you have any community events that you think the region be able to have tables at, please forward the information to me and we can share with our hourly staff. But we're going to be out of the out the next couple of weeks as well, uh continue to support enrollment. And then we also can work on the high schools regardless of doing enrollment as well. I put really good about the fall enrollment. Uh we, we will be hiring that year.
We hear a lot again about. Enrolling numbers that are not consistent with what we have. Will we pull out, will we share?
Yeah, and, and actually I'll be have shared with, if you guys just want to present it before, they need the actual numbers for full-time public students and also take it. And so, uh which, would you continue to share the information and the positive things that are happening and comment about it?
Moving on to item fifteen, grant items. Moving on to fifteen point zero one, administrative services grant amendment. For the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Social Services, out of classroom coordination services, C C C. If they move by trustee Lopez, seconded by trustee Dopplemore, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote. Moving on to fifteen uh one zero two, administrative services grants ratification, state of California Department of Social Services. For Child Development Services, C C T R dash four zero nine nine. Is there a motion? It's been moved by trustee Dopplemore, seconded by trustee Lopez. Is there any discussion? Any no discussion, please place your online vote.
That's the unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item fifteen point zero three, administrative services grants ratification, state of California. Department of Education Agreement for Child Development Services dash C S P C dash forty-one seventy-eight. Write your emotion. It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote.
That's the unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item sixteen, board policy to my administrative right to right thing.
So item six four zero work is our updated schedule for review of board policies for the twenty-four, twenty-five this period. I believe you do our standing job at the district regards to our review of board policy, to make sure board policy updating. As you're aware, we give our policy states that policy should be reviewed every five years. And so you have the updated schedule for this year. Uh item sixteen point zero two, I think. Sixteen point zero two is the update to the board policy regards to the uh annual organization meeting. Uh this is part of the board goals for this year. And so we were able to uh update the policy and lay it out for the board trustees. How the organization meeting happens and what's definitely. The next policy that's there, items uh six one zero three, is just an update of the student trustee board policy. Uh it's just some, some minor change to that. Uh also, we updated the board education policy in regards to the rest of the level for board trustees. Been aligned with our travel policy and also with the board's uh travel policy for conference participation. And then you have other board policy and mission regulations that have been worked on by the district um as we were born. Another one to highlight for you, something we learned on the last year has to do with our food. Uh okay, right here. Reflecting in regards to purchasing meals, refreshments, and institutional business expenses. We were basically able to create a mission regulation regards to purchasing our food. This is something that we work with our iron on. Regards to uh managing the food and what's allowable, what's not allowable. And so we have shared with our institutional groups, worked with our D J and directors as basis of this, and I really think this is a unique policy for the district. That includes the um. Board policy section. We'll go to the information, yes. Just a couple of things to highlight in the information section. One is to update on Albert Duffy Connor Estate for the district, just so you get an update on that. We also. Okay, we also have the uh budget information for you as well. We provided update on E O P S and the program and also update on the workforce. And adult execution efforts to advance uh student success. So these are all information, this will move forward. What you gotta be working on the next couple of weeks is the uh task force. Making sure that we get updates on the task force that were created and worked with, that was created last year. This provides with updated where those uh groups are at. Uh just as a reminder, we talked about automatic degree awarding, instead of buying this student experience. We also talk about budget and retirement trust they need plan, which you have mentioned on that actually, and then also our professional talents. And that includes.
Moving on to item eighteen, future agenda items. Eighteen point zero one, uh compliment in the college district order to pursue future agenda items request. Do any of the board members have any uh agenda requests?
Um not a future agenda item. Um and I, I don't know if Dr. Curry gets in like the updates, but we have an update on the um. Um as we approach the um the deadline, we were eventually, we probably should have an update on that on the, on the schedule.
No, I don't, but we will.
We kind of spoke earlier about anything that I was in the view of. Now that is time.
And on eighteen point zero two, that's Compton College uh my sort of STEM center. And that, that for next month. Eighteen point zero three, uh twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Compton College on final budget assumptions. That's also next month. All of these are next month. Eighteen point zero four, Compton College Professional. This is some bond oversight report. Moving on to item nineteen, poll report, uh Dr. Perry.
Yes, briefly, uh let's pass on, uh this early, but that opportunity speaker in front of the uh seventy highest committee regards to Senate Bill thirteen point eight. Which is created by Black Southern Institution Designation in California. They passed the uh Senate Education Committee, goes to a part of the community, the full assembly in. A obvious, and then we'll have to go back to the city for occurrence, because there were some changes that were made to the bill. But I'm really excited about that work is being done uh in the direction of Senator. Also too, just for the board of trustees to know that we have various uh special events that are happening on campus. Uh throughout the uh the next couple of months, that will continue. A lot of our community members are you might not campus for best events. This fall, we have not only our Compton College football team playing at our stadium, but we also have Long Beach Jordan High School, using our football stadium and also high school. These are our football stadium uh for with that. And that includes my report.
Moving on to item nineteen point zero two, uh trustee Tom.
Um I do not have any oral reports, but I would like to say moving to Long Beach Jordan Plan because I did graduate from Long Beach Jordan, so yes.
So sorry, contact.
Getting back to the. Are you want to uh compliment uh Dr. K Curry on the Fire Academy? Uh I think that that's an amazing um uh class to have. Uh I love that how the Fire Station Three, I believe. Yes, Fire Station Three is getting involved with the campus as well to make that happen. Um I know a couple of students that would kind of uh join Compton College due to that program. So thank you for um having that program here on campus. Um building two is beautiful. If you guys have not been into it, you guys should walk and just take a walk around and building two. Um also, thank you as well for the uh Artiga Bridge that will be done. That's very uh inconvenient for a lot of students and some of us as well. So thank you for getting our T J bridge done by September, can say? And that concludes my.
Nineteen point zero three, board of trustees, Dr. Little.
I just want to thank um again the administration, very um all of the initiatives, the faculty and staff. We continue to work. Um are, are screen trustee, I think tonight, I mean all of our reports, but especially tonight, we see. Yet another important reason for the community part of Compton College. And really the differentiation between Compton College and its offerings compared to many other colleges. And I would hope that we could continue to elevate the messaging. Around everything that's being offered, community partnerships. I know it's been a couple of years, but a lot of the community wanted to be more on campus. Um Dr. Ferring, the administration, you know. People who don't understand risk management and liability, um we, we moved through that to have more people. Uh really experience the community of Compton College. Now here, you know, two high schools being able to come makes a difference. When enough people come on a college campus because it sets an expectation. And it gives them orientation for that, that's not often talked about. Uh the outreach that we're, we're doing, I think St. John's in and of itself, our partnership there. Is something that we should be spreading to the top of our lungs. And you know, it, it's difficult. When the narrative is attempting to be distracted or derailed. But I hope that we all remember to uplift, inspire different perspectives that we thought. Uplifts the core of why we're here, our community, our students, um us collectively. So thank you. Um yes, I um had the pleasure of attending um the, um the, the Paramount. Adult school commencement graduation, so I think we should add those to um our list of uh. What is it called? Our end of the, our end of the year celebrations. So that was um, that was very nice to see. Um those, you know, we um those, you know, the adult, the adult learners continuing. And um and I had the pleasure to meet one of our, uh one of our students that graduated from. Um it's the, the B E S L C T E course. And um and I did confirm with this young lady, this young woman. Um that she is gonna, she will be, she is registered enrolled. And she will be um attending our campus in the fall to complete her um, um her associate's degree. So I had the, I had the pleasure to, to attend the program and also speak with some of the students, so. Um that's just some of the updates from. From area four.
And as for my report.
Recruitment.
I, I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to thank uh the, the staff, uh faculty, administrator, everyone involved in all the. Graduation ceremony celebrations last month. I, I, I missed the meeting, but. I, I, I attended as many as I could, but it is this, this year just seemed like the most we've ever had. And I, I think that's a great thing. For our students and their families and. Moving on to item twenty.
I do apologize, um I know I had my turn, but I did not bring a farmer's market. I attended the last day farmer's market. It was still a great outcome. A lot of students still came. Um uh some of us, like myself, we hold on to some of the farmer's bucks. So that day was the last day to use those farmer's bucks whenever getting new farmer's um bucks. So a lot of people were just kind of grocery shopping, myself included. So it was nice to um to have fun the last day at farmer's market, so thank you.
And items one, uh the board of trustees, um the three is scheduled for August twenty twenty-four. That's Monday, uh five P M through eight P M. And item twenty-one, our next scheduled, regularly scheduled for meeting is August twentieth, the next day. Both sessions begin at five and the second session begins at six. And this meeting is now adjourned at seven forty.